Oh, everyone's gonna have to come to the podium, that's all.
Are we recording in the back? I hope that's a yes. Good evening, everyone. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The zoning ordinance empowers this board to hear references from the city council, applications for variances and special uses, and appeals from the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, we will either make a final determination or send a recommendation to the city council. Present here tonight, whoa, wrong piece of paper, our board members Barry Beth Burns, Scott Kingold, Beth McClan, and Matthew Rogers, Clara Weinberg. I'm Lori Summers, your current chair. We therefore have a quorum. Also present here tonight from city staff are Melissa Clots, Dennis Marino, and Ken Cox. This is a formal hearing, and we have rules that govern our proceedings. Our most important rule is that only one person may speak at a time without interruption. It is not just civility, but it is necessary to accurately record our proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have an opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our normal procedure is that we hear first from the staff on the documents in the file. We will then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or repellent. After the applicant or repellent has completed their initial submission, any person who has a legal interest in real property located within 500 feet of the property that is the subject of the application or appeal may then present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. Next others who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. When all opposing testimony and other statements have been received, the applicant or repellent will be given an opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Board members may ask questions of anyone offering testimony or statements at any time. All testimony and statements will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, we ask that you limit your testimony or statement to your own personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please tell us your name and address, and be sure that it is printed -- did you -- a pad get put out? And make sure that it is printed on the pad that was provided outside. Because we do not have a court reporter, it is imperative that you speak into the microphone so your testimony or statement will be recorded. We are audio and video recorded in this room. When all of the testimony, other evidence, and statements have been received, we will close the record and begin our deliberations. I think we have some, quite a bit of housekeeping to get through in terms of minutes, going back to the March 6 meeting minutes. We discussed these previously, and I understand that council and staff have reviewed the paragraph that is in, was in question, and I'm fine with the amendments that have been provided. Are there any other comments regarding the March 6 meeting minutes? Is there a motion for approval of the March 6 meeting minutes, then?
Yes, I move that we approve the March 6 zoning board of appeals meeting minutes.
Second the motion.
It's been moved to second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? No? Alright, so those are approved. Moving on, we have our minutes from the joint meeting of the zoning board of appeals and plan commission from Wednesday, March 14th. Were there any corrections or comments on those minutes? I had just one that stuck out to me on page two at the bottom. It says Chairwoman Summers, second in the motion. I don't recall who did, but I'm 99.9% certain it wasn't me. So, if we can figure out, look at the recording and see who that was and make that correction. I think that was the only one I had.
There also seems to be an error on page three where it says Board Member Gallimore Weinberg, second in the motion.
Oh, right, I noticed that, yeah.
Although I wasn't at the meeting, so, who knows?
I believe, actually, that it was Andrew. Member Gallimore, on that one. I don't remember who seconded the initial motion, but I suspect it perhaps was me, the first motion?
Okay. So corrections to the seconds on both motions for that meeting?
You guys can either take my word for it or go through the recording. I'm not certain that my word is correct, though.
I can accept staff double-checking it. Are there any other corrections, then? Seeing none, then, are, is there a motion regarding the minutes for March 14th?
I move approval of the minute meeting, meeting minutes from our March 14th meeting with the plan commission, with the change being made to who seconded the motions.
I second that.
It's been moved to second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
None opposed? So the motion's carried, and approval of our March 14th meeting minutes is carried on, and then final set of minutes that I have in front of me are from March, Tuesday, March 20th, our last regularly scheduled meeting that we went through, and fairly straightforward here. Any, were there any comments, questions?
I would move approval of our minutes for the meeting Tuesday, March 20th.
Second the motion.
It's been moved to second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion is carried for approval of the March 20th meeting minutes. I think that gets through our minutes. On old business, I have 1704 Gray Avenue, and I don't think I see our applicant for 1704 Gray Avenue. Was there anyone who were here, was here to speak to us about 1704 Gray Avenue? Okay, seeing none. We do have an email that staff has provided us regarding, from the applicant stating that it seems they were seeking the judicial remedy that we had discussed with them, but they had indicated that they would still be here today. I don't see this as a withdrawal, Ken.
Good evening, Ken Cox of the City's Lot Department. I, under the circumstances, I direct your attention to Article 8, Section D of the ZBA rules, which states that if the petitioner fails to appear, the chair may entertain a motion to dismiss the matter. And under the circumstances, given that it's now 7:45, and the meeting was called for 7:30, and the, and the appellant has not appeared, such a motion would be in order.
Understood.
I'd also point out, this is the third time we're hearing this case, so I'd be, I'd be in favor of a motion to dismiss it.
The third time? Well, it got, it got...
It got put off, and then we heard it.
Oh, and then we heard it, okay.
So this is the third time it's been in front of us. Not really hearing it for the third time, but...
It's the third time it's taken time from our other activities.
I, I guess, I, I understand what you guys are saying. I am just curious if anyone, Mr. Cox or anyone else, can tell us what would happen if we dismiss it. Do they, if they want to bring it back up, then what happens?
Given that ZBA is essentially final city authority for hearing an appeal from the zoning administrator's decision, the appellant would have the opportunity to file a complaint for administrative review in the circuit court at the Skokie Courthouse, 5600 Old Orchard Road, within 35 days of the, of receiving the, a copy of the decision. And at that point, he could then ask a judge to review your decision and your minutes and make a determination whether or not the, your findings are accurate.
And that's true, even if we dismiss it for his lack of...
Yes.
...being here?
Are we allowed to postpone it and hear our other cases and see if he shows up?
Allowed to do whatever we want. We can continue it, we can postpone, we can, or we can dismiss.
I would put a motion out, then, just to prevent us from talking about it much further, to take their case and move it to the end of our agenda for this evening, so on the off chance that the applicant should show up late due to some emergency or something, he still has the chance to present the case to us.
I would second that motion.
There's been a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Looks like the motion has been carried. Was anybody opposed? So we will carry this to the end of our agenda, then, at this point, for 1704 Gray Avenue, and move on to the next matter of new business, which is 2760 Reese Avenue, which will be now read into the record.
Healy Rice, architect for Shelley and Alan Showan, property owners, applies for major zoning relief to construct a two-story addition. The applicant requests a street-side yard setback of 3.7 feet where 15 feet is required, zoning code section 6828A2. Building lot coverage of 35.5%, where a maximum 30% is allowed, zoning code section 6827. An impervious surface coverage of 48.3%, where a maximum 45% is allowed, zoning code section 68210A. The zoning board of appeals is the determining body for this case. Submitted with the application and included in the ZBA packet is the variance application submitted March 1st, 2012. Standards form, zoning analysis, plat of survey dated March 21st, 2003. Proposed site plan, interior floor plan, elevations, image of property, aerial view of property, and spark meeting minutes from April 11th, 2012.
Okay, nothing else. I don't think anything else that we received tonight was for this case, so...
Correct.
So we have everything here. If I could have everyone, please stand and raise your right hand if you expect to speak with us regarding this case, so you can be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. And if you could state your name and address?
I'm Healy Rice. I'm the architect for the project. I live at 934 Elmwood Avenue in Wilmette, and I'm here on behalf of Alan and Shelley Showan, who are the owners of the property.
Okay.
We are, as the record read, we are seeking a variance in order to build a one-story mudroom and a second floor over an existing family room in this new proposed mudroom. Our variance is seeking permission to extend the existing non-conforming wall back to the end of the existing house. It fills in a little corner that's approximately 4.9 feet by 10 feet. So the, all the variances are driven off this infill of the rear corner of the property. We're trying to build a mudroom on the first floor, and then a new master bedroom on the second floor above it. The home is a bungalow, and so a lot of the second floor space is actually under roof, and currently there are three bedrooms and one bathroom on the second floor, so we're seeking, or we're proposing to build a master bedroom, so a fourth bedroom and a second bathroom on the second floor. Really, the major part of the variation is all driven off the mudroom, given that that's the footprint expansion of the property. All of, the, I guess, addition is, I think, less than a 1% in terms of the floor area and the, or not floor, but lot coverage and the impervious surface, which again is just off this mudroom addition. The property does have a large parkway that faces Isabella, so visually, this addition does not steal from the street or impact any of the adjoining neighbors. So really, the appearance of the property won't change much at all. The lot is quite small for the neighborhood. That was one of the things the spark committee pointed out, that relative to other properties in the area, we are, are less than standard. I guess I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Did you consider any designs where the second floor was not larger than the first floor?
We did, but it was really trying to make the space usable in terms of the footprint. The back, the current family room is 10 feet deep, a little over 10 feet, so having a master bedroom that's 10 feet wide, we felt was, was not satisfactory, or 10 feet long.
Can you tell us what the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is for the applicant in complying with the zoning ordinance?
The home was built probably in the 30s or 40s, and the, whether the parkway was part of the original property or not, we don't know, but the existing house is the three and a half feet, or 3.7 feet from the property line, and that's the line we wish to extend west. You know, it certainly wasn't created by the applicant, it's original to the property, and there isn't a way to create the space behind it in a location that's practical to the home. I mean, it just adds back into the family room, we'd be back to the same situation with regard to overage on, on the footprint and on the impervious surface. It's really the setback, the side yard setback that drives this, side yard adjoining a street, so...
Can you speak to any explorations that you made regarding extending the bulk in a way that is inconsistent with the rest of the home versus doing a dormer situation or something like that?
I mean, I guess that is certainly an option, although from a cost standpoint, that was a factor with the owner. To, I guess, rip the roof off and raise the second floor up would have been an option, but seemed extraordinary for what we were trying to achieve. The existing, the second floor plan has a front bedroom, a center bedroom that has a bathroom across the hall from it, and then a back bedroom right now. So the way the house was updated maybe 15, 20 years ago, there's a staircase that loops up to the second floor from the family room or from the kitchen area, and that space is sort of one and a half stories right now with a vaulted area. We did look at that as an option, but again, there just wasn't enough room to make that work with the second floor plan.
I have another question. Did you consider putting the master bedroom up front where the bedroom is large, so that you could, so that a 10-foot-wide bedroom as a kid's second bedroom isn't a problem, and taking the hall bath as the master bath, and then making a hall bath in the back corner?
The ceiling in that area, at the best, is seven foot six, and then it drops downhill from there, so the, the area, I've got a photo, you've probably been by the house, but I can give you guys a picture of the front, but it does drop rapidly downhill. The knee walls at that point are three foot six, so the area in that room, while it appears wide, is actually probably usable, maybe six, six to seven feet wide in the center of it. You know, again, we'd be looking at raising the roof and going up over the whole second floor, or at least a part of the second floor to do this. And the owners do like the feel of the, the home relative to the neighborhood, and, you know, there, there are many bungalows and one and a half story houses in the area, and didn't want to go with a full second floor over that if, if it was permissible.
What is the current material on the house?
Brick on the first floor, frame on the second. It's got a sided, a bump out on the south side, and sided, the family room has got siding on it.
So the back of the house is already sided?
Correct.
Also, this extra, I mean, this extra, this extra kind of depth to the back is also pushing us over into variances, like building lot coverage that's relatively speaking pretty close to... Well, I think it's just the mudroom that's pushing you into that, right?
Correct, right. That's my understanding.
Because the second floor overhang doesn't count in lot coverage? Doesn't it?
Given how small the second floor overhang is, it is not calculated in the building lot coverage.
But it's a... Is that like a definitive thing, or like a...
It's more of on a case-by-case basis. In this case, when we'd be looking at, say, impervious surface, we're looking at it from a rain standpoint. Rain is still going to get down to the area right next to the first story, so in this case, it wasn't counted.
It wasn't counted for impervious surface, but was it counted for building lot coverage?
No, to be consistent with both.
But a porch roof at the same height would have been counted. I think the thinking there is because there's deck below it, and this is open to grade. I think that's their rationale. But we don't count a deck if it has holes in it? Yeah. It's, I don't, I don't disagree. So it's the roof that's making the difference between a porch being counted and not counted? Right.
If the overhang was a lot larger, it would be counted, but given how small it is...
30 inches is big, I think. Um, okay, well, I guess my thoughts on that are, oh, but anyways, um...
The inside depth of that bedroom is 12 feet?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm trying to understand a little bit, because it's like, I feel like, I know, I feel like we're, we're so close to, to be adding extra, to be adding an extra variance for, a pretty significant one, for 50 square feet. I don't know.
Is your concern the lot coverage or the impervious?
Just the kind of overall, like, variance need as, you know, kind of...
If they were adding a bay, we, I don't think there would be an exception to it, like a bay window.
Was there anyone else who wished to speak to us regarding this case, by the way? Okay, so there's, I see no one from the audience who wished to speak with us, so, um, just a note for that, for the record. Do you guys have any other questions? No. Did you wish to sum up at all, or haven't, did you have anything else you wished to say?
I guess we feel that what we've proposed is de minimis in terms of, of the addition, that it is not impactful on any neighbor. The, certainly the streetscape that is, where the variance is driven off of, has the perception of the, the side yard in, actually excessive to what would be the 15-foot requirement on a, on a corner. So, you know, in those cases, and we just felt that we were efficient with our space, and tried to keep it as, as reasonable as possible. This family has three children. A mudroom today is, is a space that, that an owner needs. Right now, you walk in to a landing that steps down to the basement, so there's no place at all to hang a coat or leave some shoes. None of the rooms in this house are oversized. If we could have stolen space from other rooms, we would have. You know, I, I think it's a reasonable request, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. With that, we will close the record and begin our deliberations. Thoughts?
I, it just seems to me that the requested variations are consistent with the purposes of the ordinance and fairly minimal over the existing conditions.
I agree with Scott. It does seem like they've also explored other options to try to make it stay within the, in the zoning ordinance. They were going to have to get something, as far as a variance goes, no matter what they did.
Also, the, looking at the overhead map that's part of the materials, the house immediately next door extends quite a bit further back on the same footprint, so I don't think the extension here would be too terribly different from the, what exists in the neighborhood.
I think the, the difference for me that I'm having in this case is that, I think it's, I think it's one thing when we do extensions and allow maintenance of building lines that are consistent with the, with the bulk of the existing home, and consistent, you know, with the neighboring homes and that sort of thing. So certainly, I don't think the neighbor would be all that surprised to see a similar extension to their extension on this property that maintains the, similar sort of bulk to the, to the home, but I think that this is, the fact that this is such a distinct departure makes it out of the, the norm of a normal kind of continuation of a, of a building line.
I do agree with Lori's assessment. That's sort of my feeling on it as well. It's so, it's so different, and the additional two and a half feet.
Can, can you guys clarify on that a little bit, architecturally speaking?
Well, the, as Scott, if you look at your overhead shot, as Scott noticed and observed, the house next door appears to go back to a similar depth. However, the, you know, the mass, the main mass of the home has been continued in a similar fashion. So, an extension of this home that was, you know, from a bulk standpoint, an extension of the home that was similar in, in massing to the front of the home would be kind of more, more in keep, more in kind of in keeping and accepting in terms of the neighborhood and that sort of thing. And that might have dormers or whatever, that might be consistent of it, but the bulk would not be as large as what we're looking at here. And then adding on to that, sort of the, kind of the pushing of the, of that top, kind of even further kind of exacerbates that bulk aspect.
Because what you're seeing here is a, is a low-pitched gabled roof that's going all the way back, and then at the, for the last 12 feet, it's a big box that is higher than the existing roof and does not fit in with the shape of that existing roof.
That, the impact of that box, say, on the neighbors, you know, from a neighboring standpoint, and from a street standpoint, is very, is very different.
I see what you're saying. How... How, with, with trees and parkway and all of that, I mean, how truly visible is that going to be? I mean, I don't, I just, I don't want to stick it in the situation where we're designing the project for the applicant, you know what I mean?
I think, I think I'm more concerned about, I'm always concerned when we look at these property lines in terms of the bulk and consistency and bulk and expectation and if, you know, and, and creating a lot of bulk at a, near a property line that is, you know, not in keeping with the neighborhood and not in keeping with the expectation of, of the neighborhood. So that's when I get concerned, is when there's a lot of bulk that's not expected and out of the norm.
But this, this proposal is not adding bulk on a property line, and there's not a property line variation being sought.
I, I believe there is.
I don't...
Proposed street-side yard setback is on my list.
Isn't that the nonconforming?
Because of the mudroom addition, they are increasing the nonconformity of that setback, so they're not actually getting closer to the street than the rest of the house is. But that is a variance, and that's the one that was a major variance that triggered it to come here for all three variances. Otherwise, the other two would have been minors done internally by staff.
So it's because the house is currently, encroaches on, on the side yard setback, and they want to extend that line further that, that the variation's required?
Correct. Otherwise, the mudroom addition would need to be set back 15 feet from that property line, even though the rest of the house is not.
And, and, and kind of, so, and where I was going is that they're continuing, they're not only continuing their line, that line, but they're continuing that line at a much more massive bulk up above that point. So that's kind of where my concern comes in.
And Melissa, so the variance is not just for the first floor, it's for the second floor as well that's within that side yard setback?
That's correct.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Because I think we would all...
It's not just, it's, it's not just the mudroom that's creating that, it's the, it's the, it's the whole second floor piece that is out to that line.
Because I think we would all agree that the mudroom is a, is a logical variance to give because it continues, there's an existing roof there, you're filling in the walls that are continuous with the lines of the existing building. That one's very simple, right? We've all sort of agreed to that. It's just when you get up at the second level and now you're, you're projecting so much further beyond the plane of the roof that's there.
It's somewhat deceiving in the plan, if you look at the second floor plan, it seems like there are walls at the second floor there, but there really aren't. The wall that's next to the stair at the second floor plan...
Wait, I'm sorry, talk me through that a little bit more.
Are you on the second floor plan?
Yeah.
So do you see the outside wall that's right next to the stair?
Yes.
That might look like a tall, from plan perspective, that might look like, you might say, oh, there's a wall right there, so you're just continuing that wall?
Mm-hmm.
But in 3D, that's not actually the case, that's not really true because that's where the, you know, the roof is basically coming down there, so there's not really a second floor...
Right.
There's not really a second floor wall at that location. That's really where the roof...
Right, it's where...
So if you think about the...
Where up front, it's slanted in, yeah, yeah.
It's really the bedroom walls on the front that are the outside walls of the building on the second floor.
Right.
And that middle bedroom can go all the way out there because that's a dormer...
Right.
As a gable in the other direction.
So you see that on the north elevation, you see how that...
So where does the, the massing start, like, so if we're looking down on top of the house, where would it start being?
Um...
Behind the staircase? Okay.
Yeah, where the, where you see the shadow line start, where the existing gable ends. There's a shadow line.
If you're looking at the area.
Oh, sorry, yeah, or if you're...
Yeah, if you're looking at the area.
I'm actually, I'm look, yeah.
Sorry, I thought you were looking at the arrow. If you're looking at the arrow, it's where the shadow line is. If you're looking at the floor plan, basically that back, the wall that's to the left-hand side of the stair...
Mm-hmm.
Is where the mass would come up.
So it's like a, sort of a 12-foot by 26-foot rectangle, kind of?
Yes.
Can I give you a little bit of perspective, too? The south side from the bathroom back has a flat shed roof on it. So the second floor from the bathroom back to the house, back, is already two stories.
Mm-hmm.
On the street side is where it slopes from the bedroom wall and over the staircase wall.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, that's really what's driving why we're seeking this in order to build a bedroom that's functional.
Okay, all right. I think I've got a handle on.
Also to keep in mind, the proposed height for the addition is 24.8 feet. If they did meet all of the aspects of variances that they're here for tonight, then instead they could, as of right, build up to 35 feet in height, adding another 10 feet to it. If you look at the north elevation plan and see the addition where it does stick up above the rest of the house, I don't have the exact measurement here, but it looks like it's going to stick up about four feet overall. So from the street, looking at it, I don't know that it's going to be as big of a bulky thing as you might be imagining, being that you'll be down below it.
We hipped the roof to set it back on it as opposed to going to a gable shape. We're really trying not to make it massive, but just make it a room that people could stand up in.
Not to put the other architect on the spot, but I'd be curious to hear member Weinberg's take on this.
It's a small house. I, I understand the, you know, programmatic needs. Are, you know, could there be more cottagey solutions to it? Yes, but, you know, adding multiple dormers to make it usable may be more expensive for the owner. It's a modest house. I, I agree that it, it looked, on, on paper, it's bulky, but in reality, it's going to be recessed towards the back. So my mind, it's trying to maximize the use of the house.
Even from seeing a street side of that, you think?
You're talking the north elevation?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's not, it's not like that's covered up from another house, you know, it's not even like that, it's not like that's like a row of houses even, so that bulk is like right out at the street.
It's got big parkway trees.
I mean, you know, there could also be articulation, some, you know, something that ties in the overhang to the bottom and plays up that sort of New England, sort of Clappard-like design to it.
I did carry the roof through to try to soften it a little bit, the overhang that's existing. It's, I was trying to be creative. I was just trying to be efficient, too, you know, the homeowners have a reasonable budget.
Or even an entry, some sort of canopy detail or something, articulate the, the door so it doesn't look just like your door slapped onto the side.
You know, then we're closer, we're even more into the side yard, so...
I mean, heck, I, I even think doing the roof on this thing closer to the gable roof on the other bedroom would have at least gotten it a little bit, a little bit down, I don't know. So anyways, but, sorry.
I did look at, I did look at that, and that seemed more massive because it was more in your face, facing Isabella, when it came straight up, so...
All right. Anything else from anyone on the board? All right. Then, I'm going to really quickly have us just run through, I don't know if we need to say everything, but if we can just run through the standards really quickly since I think we're mixed, just give an up or down on that. So we have a tally. Standard number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties.
I believe that standard has been met.
I agree. There's no evidence in the record that it hasn't, and that there are no other property owners here to complain about it.
I would agree.
I would disagree. What about you, Mepa?
Yeah, I would disagree, too, because I think that the, the additional bulk on the back is, although a neighbor's not here to complain, that doesn't really concern me so much. But I do think that there is a substantial amount of bulk being added to the back of the house that I think does have an adverse impact on the neighborhood.
What is the adverse impact, and what fact in the record supports that?
My opinion.
What's the adverse, what, what's the adverse impact that you're, that you have an opinion is going to exist?
I think that it affects the, the light and air that can get to the neighborhood, the neighbor's property. I think that it affects the, the, the look of the neighborhood and the feel of the neighborhood by taking a one-and-a-half-story bungalow and putting a two-story addition on to the back of it.
Standard number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Awesome. Agreed?
Agreed.
Standard has been met. Generally speaking, I think it's following the right direction. Standard number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. I think it's on a corner and that's sort of small, so we've talked about some of those sorts of things.
Tight, tight spot.
Standard number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or to practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience. Thoughts down there, anyone?
I believe that standard has been met.
I agree.
I would agree as well. I think that trying to take homes that were built in the 1930s and make them accommodate a family of today usually does require some sort of finagling.
Okay, agreed. Standard number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. Seems that the standard has been met. I agree.
Agree.
The owners seem to be wanting to stay in the property. Standard number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. I think we talked about, mostly about the size of the property and that sort of thing, so from that standpoint, I believe the standard's been met.
I agree.
Agreed. Standard number seven, the requested variation is limited to the minimum change necessary to alleviate the particular hardship or practical difficulty which affects the property. I think I spoke quickly about some of the, how close we were to being over some of the variance issues and, so for that reason, I don't believe the standard has been met. Any other thoughts?
I believe that the standard has been met because I think that the increases being sought are very modest.
Agreed.
I would have to agree with Lori that I don't believe this is the minimum standard that has been met.
I don't think the minimum's been met either.
Okay. With that, we've run through the standards for a major variation, and is there a motion regarding the variations that are in hand for 2760 Reese Avenue then?
In the case of 2760 Reese Avenue, Zoning Board of Appeals, case 12ZMJV-0019, I move that we grant the variances requested for a street-side yard setback of 3.7, where 15 is required, a building lot coverage of 33.5, where a maximum of 30% is allowed, an impervious surface coverage of 48.3%, where a maximum of 45 is allowed, with the condition that all... No, excuse me, what's that little thing that we always say? Under the condition that the project is carried out in compliance with all the testimony that we've received here this evening.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Nay. The vote is three to three, which means that we do not have a total of four votes needed to make a decision, and our policy on that is that the record will be carried over to the absent member who will vote at the next regularly scheduled meeting that they are in attendance at. It means that you don't really need to show up, but it's, but...
I don't like to show up, obviously.
Yeah, but it's just...
I just feel, I'm sorry, I know this is close.
The formal decision, the formal decision gets carried over till, till that vote is in place.
Do we know when that would be? It might be notified at that, so...
The next meeting that has been canceled due to a lack of agenda items is for May 1st. If you guys would rather convene at that time for this, you can. Otherwise, the next meeting after that is May 15th.
Do we know if that person will be there?
We can...
That was going to be my question.
We can certainly check and see, try to check in, we can try to check in advance and see what his, what his agenda is. Obviously, I don't know his calendar, but staff can certainly check on his attendance for that meeting and get you an update on what our expectation is for, for a vote for that meeting, so, all right.
Rip the roof off and build two stories, and you guys would be happy with that. That's really unfortunate.
Our next item on our agenda is 2627 Lincolnwood Drive.
Bruce Rogers, architect for Dawn and Nikolai Larbaluster, property owners, applies for major zoning relief to construct a two-story addition in the rear yard, convert an attached garage to livable space, and establish one open parking space in the front yard. The applicant requests a rear yard setback of 14.7 feet, where 30 feet is required, zoning code section 6828A4, and to establish one open parking space in the front yard, zoning code sections 6463B18, 6828A1, and 61621C1. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes recommendation to City Council, the final determining body.
Okay, and just for clarification, you've handed us tonight three emails from, that you've received regarding the application, correct?
That is correct, and attached to that as well is a map showing where those properties are relative to the property in question.
Okay, thank you.
Before we start, can I ask for clarification on what you consider to be the front yard? Is it Hertzel or Lincolnwood?
The front yard would be Lincolnwood...
Okay.
Where the existing driveway is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then also just to clarify, we received a packet of information this evening, and this was supplied by the applicant, correct? So I'm going to call as applicant's exhibit A then.
Would it be okay if we just took a couple minutes to read the emails that we got tonight?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thanks.
That'd be good.
Thank you. How are we doing? Good? Great. Then now that everyone on the board has had a chance to review the letters that we've got this evening, thank you for your patience. If I could have everyone who thinks that there's any chance that they wish to speak to us tonight on this matter, please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
No.
Thank you very much. And again, when you do come up or if you do speak, please make sure you're at a microphone and state your name and address. So please go ahead.
Good evening. My name's Nick Larblessier. I am the homeowner. And I, we put together this packet and I just wanted to walk through with the introduction. So I'll just lead with that. So the reason, as you know, we're here to apply for major zoning relief is to replace our current garage with living space and to make the current front yard driveway our legally required parking space. Additionally, a variance was requested for the rear yard setback for squaring off the house, the corner of the house. Major thing I'm going to focus on is the front yard driveway. So first I'll address the Spark recommendation for denial and enumerate our case for major variance against the standards. Excuse me. From the ZBA packet that you were previously given, the city zoning department at Spark recommended denial on the basis that our proposed change was not the minimum change required. However, I believe that that's not a valid basis to settle this variance due to existing conditions, impacts on the property and adjoining properties, and due to the hardship imposed by following the city's zoning proposed rear parking. We do have in the stuff we handed out, previous application was made that shows the proposed rear parking was considered. So you may want to refer to that. I will talk about that a little bit further along. As far as standard, the first standard, standard A, impact on adjoining properties. It's our position that the proposed variance to allow the front parking will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties for the simple reason this parking space is already in existence and in regular use. However, it is our position that moving the parking to the side or rear of the property does have a potential negative impact on adjoining properties, specifically our neighbors to the east on Hartzell who would join what would be the new driveway, and our neighbors across Hartzell to the north who would be looking directly out their front windows into the modified property with the loss of tree cover, new curb cut, and view of parking. To support this point, we have statements from the affected neighbors. You saw the three emails, and we also have a few neighbors here to say, say a few words. Standard B, intent of zoning ordinance. As far as I understand, the intent of the zoning ordinance specifically for R1, the key point was to preserve the present physical character of the area. I believe that our application, our proposed changes preserve the existing features, many of the existing features, the front driveway, and many other properties in the area have front parking. So I would contend that it meets the zoning intent of preserving the present physical character. We did explore the option, which again was on the sheet I referred to earlier, of relocating the parking to the, the parking to the rear of the property. We do also have in the sheet some, a map of properties in our immediate vicinity that have, currently have front parking, just to demonstrate that it's in keeping with current physical character.
That, sorry, just to clarify, that currently have front driveways or have legal front parking spaces?
This, this one is that have front driveways. We do have some legal things to show later. These, these would be existing non-conforming, I guess, as you would say. Standard C, hardship or practical difficulty peculiar to the property. Our property, having no alley access and being on a split-corner lot, does face some difficulty in complying with the strict letter of the zoning ordinance in many respects due to limited space. Our lot, for example, is approximately 4,500 square feet where the minimum lot size specified in the standards is 7,500 for R1. So you can see it's quite a bit smaller than standard. In case of moving parking to the rear, we would have to do a new curb cut on Hartzell. Utility pole would need to be relocated, buried utilities. Parkway tree would have to be removed, and we'd have to remove the existing front curb cut and drive. This would add 20% or more to our project costs and have a negative impact on our property value due to the loss of the backyard space. In practical terms, we believe the solution also has a few issues when looking at the practicality of actually parking a vehicle in the proposed rear spot there unless you pulled completely to the outside edge, you would not have enough clearance to open the rear doors of, of our current vehicles without hitting the house. Hartzell Street is narrower than many residential streets. There's parking only on the north side, and there would be potentially some clearance issues when maneuvering in and out of the drive. Although the house is not currently, or proposed to be oriented towards the northeast side of the property where that proposed rear parking would have been, and of course the loss of a recreation area for our family. Standard D, hardship as distinguished from mere inconvenience. Should, should the zoning board fail to approve this variance, we will, we will have to cancel this project and look for alternative housing to, to support our family's needs. And standard E and F, I don't see applicability to our case. No additional income or no hardship or difficulty created by interested parties. And finally, standard G, minimum change necessary. As we discussed, the alternative, moving parking to the rear was explored, but we, we, you know, after exploring that and looking at the practicalities and the impacts on that, it just did not seem to be a viable solution. Therefore, we believe that our currently proposed solution is the minimum change necessary. Finally, we have some examples of precedents, and these are of, of legal required parking in the front yard. These are all in the, towards the rear of the handouts we gave you. There are five properties we found with granted variances for required front parking. I believe you have a picture of them as well as the, a copy of the case address file that the city provided to us, and, and two cases and ordinance applicable to that property. Any questions for me?
I have a quick question. It, it seems, was the major goal of the project to add the family room or the master bedroom?
Well, both. We have, we have three, three boys grown up, and so we needed both extra living space and an additional bedroom. We currently have three bedrooms.
Did you consider not doing the family room?
Uh, we...
Leaving the garage as is and then getting a variance to build the master bedroom above the existing garage?
We did consider that option, but we did not feel that we got enough benefit out of that project in terms of living space for our family to make it a viable alternative for us.
I think that's kind of where I was, I was kind of, I was struggling with sort of the hardship side in terms of the family room piece as well and sort of, again, yeah, trying to understand that.
We...
Minimum change necessary.
It's a small house, four or five people. You know, there's really three rooms on the main level. So the extra living space would be a large benefit to us.
And is this, does this home have a basement or...?
Has a basement, yeah. It's a, has heat, we have radiator heat and we have, there's a lot of pipes that are at head height. So it's, and it's got a low ceiling as well.
Are there any other questions for the applicant right now before we go to any other comments? Okay, does anyone else wish to speak to us from the public regarding this case? Please come forward and make sure you state your name and address there. Thank you.
My name is Barry Vivart. I'm an architect working with Bruce Rogers on the project.
Okay.
My address is 4212 North Cadvale Avenue in Chicago. And I had one point to bring to your attention. I believe you have a copy of the Flat of Survey in the, in the documentation?
We do.
And you also, I think, have a, a diagram that shows the neighborhood and the lots. Is that correct? I've, I've got this off the Evanston GIS.
I don't, I don't know that we have that specific.
Yeah, it's in this packet.
Did I miss it?
The email.
No, no, I, well, I, we don't have that.
But...
We don't have the blow up or whatever.
Exactly.
And, and my point is that you'll note that this lot is actually a bit unusual in that it is not rectangular, it is mostly square. In fact, it's 72 feet on Hartzell Street and 63 feet on Lincolnwood Drive. And I, I would submit to you that it's not apparent which side of the lot is the front and which is the side. Whether Hartzell is, you could argue that Hartzell could be the front as well as Lincolnwood. If Hartzell were the front, then the existing driveway would be in the side yard. The house is located in the southeast corner of the lot. And, and if the intent of the zoning ordinance is to get the parking out of the front yards, then relocating the parking off of Hartzell puts it, it doesn't really change the configuration. It's on Hartzell and lieu of being on, on Lincolnwood. My second point is that the lot is extremely small. It's only two thirds, two thirds the size of a typical lot. And the proposed configuration for, that was studied for putting the, for locating the driveway off of Hartzell actually increases the amount of driveway area. The current driveway is, what is it? The current driveway is just about 200 square feet, and the proposed scheme would have a driveway that's 260 square feet. It's almost 20% larger. So it's already a small lot. There's not a lot of lot area, and it's an unusual lot. And this would require making, taking the tiny amount of lot that's already there and making the driveway even larger. So that is my second point.
While you're there, can I ask you a question? Did you guys look at adding any additional space into the attic for the additional living space?
Hi. I'm Bruce Rogers. I live at 1421 Leonard Place, just down the block. Yes, we did. The space up there, it's not a, it's not a full-height attic, so it's maybe four feet at the peak. So we would have to, again, raise the, raise the space, the whole second floor. I wanted to point out too that, I don't think Nick mentioned earlier, that the existing garage, when the house was built in the 1920s, it apparently was big enough to use, but currently, they can put their car in there, but once it's in, they can't open the doors. So that, keeping that garage space as a garage, this is really no, there's no practical benefit to, to having it there. It's just too small. Which, you know, is part of the, if it was, if they were driving a Model T, I'm sure they could use it, but, but they're not. So as it's, it's unusable as a garage space. And I wanted to clarify also that we're, we're taking that down, we're reusing, reusing as much of the brick from that as we can and rebuilding in the same spot just because the, the garage isn't structurally suited to, to hold a second floor.
Maybe staff or the applicant and whichever was better suited to answer the question could help me out in terms of the dual notice that's in the, the dual public notice that's in the packet here. Is there, are there alternates that we're considering? What's the...
Yeah, so the, the first notice, well, one of the notices has the, has the rear parking pad noted with a drive entry from Hartzell. This was when we originally submitted the plans to the city, they had indicated that our, our proposed plan of keeping the front driveway would not pass the Zoning Board of Appeals and that we should come up with an alternative. So we came up with this alternative, and it was put on the docket for the zoning board at that time, but as we worked through the issues, we realized that wasn't going to be practical. And so what you have here is the first, that was going to be submitted to the, the original meeting, we would have been on the docket for. And then the second one that has the, that has no parking in the rear and the driveway indicated on front is the current.
Okay, so the 0008 is just, that's not, there's no either/or aspect or something to this. We're just considering the 0020.
Right, that, that was kind of an alternative we had looked at but discarded.
Okay.
Yeah, so. Oh, and there was other, one other thing I wanted to add. It's not just the living, the, a family room that we're adding back there, we're also getting a mudroom, which is also very functional. Just wanted to add that for the record.
Right, that's, that's outside of the space of the garage though, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it?
Yes.
Because I'm looking at the Flat of Survey, and it looks like there's a 7.7 by 10.08 square in the back. That's what the mudroom is, isn't it?
Yeah, but they're, they're kind of...
It's existing space.
They're enclosing the, they're kind of adding that other... They're enclosing the, they're kind of adding that other rectangular area with the double doors.
Right, but they're not using that as mudroom. That's storage from the outside.
Right, exactly. That's a, by storage from outside.
So, your mudroom is in existing space.
It's in existing space, that's correct.
Right, that was the only clarification I wanted to make.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Was there anyone else who wished to speak to us regarding the matter at twenty-six-twenty-seven Lincolnwood?
Hi, I'm Brian Feroe. I'm the neighbor to the west. I've been a resident at that location for twenty-two years.
At twenty-nine-oh-seven Lincolnwood?
Two-six-two-two, so it would be on Lincolnwood just to the west, right across the street from the Larval SDAs. There's one house to the north of us on the corner.
Oh, sorry, I had my plan drawn, turned sideways. Sorry.
I, I just wanted to give the block's perspective on the changes and requests that are being placed by the Larval SDAs. They do have three boys. We've seen them kind of grow up and do like every other family does. They buy a house and they have children, they need to expand their home. I think the bulk of the request is, I'm simplifying it certainly, but the bulk of the request is they choose not to have a garage. They want to build the house out and have more living space. We have tonight represented neighbors to the east and also to the north. And I'm to the west and there's nobody to the north except across the street. I, I, I think it, mine's more of a romantic request, I guess. I think it comes down to the neighborhood and wanting to have somebody that's going to move into a place and, and fix it up and kind of grow with the neighborhood. And we'd like to see as, as a neighborhood that you approve this request. You'll do that. Thanks.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? You can, feel free to, if you want to adopt comments, feel free to just state your name and adopt comments.
Yeah, I mean, I just like to-
We, we fully accept that, so you can state your name and address and adopt comments.
I'm Jason Ross and I live in the property, actually right to the south, right next to you, so right where that, the current driveway is.
Twenty-six-twenty-one?
Twenty-six-twenty-one, yeah. And, yeah, I second everything that Brian has stated and it, you know, what they're planning on doing doesn't really impact, you know, anything other than having them leave, I think, would be, you know, because if they couldn't move forward with their plans and look elsewhere, I'd, you know, we'd like to keep them in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, I should say something too. I'm Liza Kirkpatrick and I live at two-nine-
Sorry, if you could just say your name in the microphone.
Liza Kirkpatrick, two-nine-zero-four, Hartzell Street. So, I am directly to their east and have no issue with this proposal that they're putting together. We'd rather have them in the neighborhood than move. I also have a garage where I cannot get a car into it, in a driveway in the front. We park, what they're asking to do is exactly what they've been doing all along. There's no way cars can fit into these garages. My house is the same way. So, it's really, as far as the neighborhood is concerned, it will function the same way it's been, but they'll have more living space and be able to stay in the neighborhood. So, and I second what Brian and Jason had to say.
Thanks. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to us? All right. Were there any other questions from the board for right now? Then, Mr. Larvalister, did you have anything that you wanted to summarize with or conclude with or anything of that nature before we?
Yeah, I would just like to just reinforce the point that while I understand why we have zoning laws and why these things must be done, I, that our particular, in particular the parking in the front, it seems that, it seems to be a, a large hurdle for us to just keep what we have, which, which seems somewhat at odds with reality. So, I would just appeal to what I think should be a, a recognition of actual conditions as opposed to maybe strict legal requirements. But I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. And with that, we will close the record and begin our deliberations. I'm going to presume there's consensus about the thirty feet, but somebody correct me if I'm wrong. The thirty-foot, there's a thirty-foot variance for the ba, the, the la-la.
Oh, for the addition?
Yes, for the-
The rear yard setback.
Just technically a thirty-foot rear yard setback is required. That's one of our variances that we're considering.
I, I just-
I was misunderstanding something.
I'd just point out, I mean, the, the variances that are being sought really pertain to squaring off the corner of the house where the existing garage stops. And if that's really all we're talking about, squaring off the house, I again, as in the last case-
And adding the second floor.
Right.
Which is the same variance.
Right. Think that it's a very minimal change. In this case, the size of the lot is unique, the size of the home is unique. And as pertains to the parking situation, I agree with the architect that it's not a good solution to take away from a small lot and move a parking space for the sake of moving it when in fact there are really two front yards on this corner property. So, I, I think it's, again, a modest project that is in the spirit of what we need to do, recognize that there are a lot of very old homes in Evanston that require some adaptation.
I would add that there would be greater negative impact by adding a garage to the side yard, what we're calling the side yard now. So, I would be in favor of keeping that open space. And really what they're asking is to codify the existing situation. They don't use their garage as a garage, they use it as some sort of miscellaneous living space, storage, so.
They're asking us to codify their particular use of the property, but the thing is, the driveway currently leads to a garage and there's not any understanding that a car could not fit in, that maybe not the cars that they drive, but there is-
Do we know the dimension of the garage door?
Well, the front, the front wall of the garage is eleven-point-oh-eight.
Right.
So, it's got to be-
The testimony wasn't that the car couldn't fit in, it's that you can fit a car in and then not be able to get out of the car because it's too narrow.
Well, then I'll correct my statement to say maybe that the car couldn't, their car can't fit in and a door open. That's not to say that a car cannot fit in and a door open. Once you remove that garage, you've removed the possibility of someone being able to drive into, use a driveway into a garage. You've now created living space in that space.
But, right now, that supposed garage isn't being used as a garage.
But the thing is, the way the ordinance is written, it's a driveway, it's not a parking pad at this point. So, we are being asked to create a new designation for that space. It's not a driveway any longer. It becomes a concrete parking pad in the front yard.
That's true, although effectively it's being used that way.
Doesn't matter whether it's being used that way because there's nothing that says you can't park your car outside of your garage.
Well, in my view, it does matter that it's being used that way because the character of the neighborhood is shown by the pictures submitted is that many people are using their driveways that way. So, having a parking pad and having a car out front of the house on that street is not impacting the neighborhood in some way. I think it does matter how it's functionally being used and able to be used.
Well, we, we've had, this is not the first and certainly probably not the last case where we've kind of dealt with, with this concept of removing a garage that a driveway goes to and whether or not we should create a parking spot there. And, and some of them have been trying to create parking spots inside yard, legal parking spots inside yards, et cetera, et cetera. And we've generally, and I guess I'll just speak for myself, certainly myself, sort of upheld the very kind of strict aspect of the zoning ordinance on this issue, that there are not front parking spaces in Evanston. This is that we are creating because we're trying to alleviate that as much as possible. I would say from a lot, a uniqueness of lot standpoint, this is probably the closest I've ever come to, to looking at that consideration because it doesn't have the rear access that many of those other lots have had and that sort of thing. So, I will give it, I will give it that from, from the uniqueness of the property standpoint, but I still kind of, I still kind of run into the kind of, the very sort of strict interpretation of the ordinance on this in pretty much all cases. And then furthermore to the, sort of the minimum change hardship sort of level of it, I think we've talked about. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent, I'm not a hundred percent convinced on the needing the family room in that location aspect of it.
I am usually very against front parking spaces. I am, however, somewhat inclined to give this one the benefit of the doubt because of the situation with Hartzell and Lincolnwood. And there is some doubt as to, you know, okay, what are we calling the side yard? What are we calling the front yard? I know, I know we're calling Lincolnwood the front yard. I am also extremely, extremely opposed to the solution being put forth of a curb cut on Hartzell. For all the evidence that was presented and my knowledge of the neighborhood and the traffic flow and cutting down the tree, I, I think that's a horrendous solution. I'm completely against that.
I don't know that anybody, and I may be speaking only for myself, but I don't know that anybody thinks that that's a good idea.
Great. I would say that a family of five, a family room is going to help their living situation immensely. I'm, I am not convinced that a living room, dining room, kitchen, first floor are really sufficient without some additional space somewhere. And it sounds like, from the testimony we heard, that the attic and the basement are not really options without some kind of huge expense. So, this to me seems like a reasonable use of the building footprint as far as their request for the building goes. Now, I, I do have some issues with turning the driveway into a front parking spot.
Any other thoughts before we move into our standards? All right, I'm going to suggest that we break this apart. We can run through the standard once and kind of state for each if we want, but I think that we could, we should, based on what I'm hearing, consider these two, we have two variances, correct? Do I have more than two? I think I, sorry. Are there technically other ones?
No, I think it's just the two.
Is it just the two, Melissa?
You can treat it as two. The parking variance references three different sections of the code, but that can all be lumped into one.
Into, okay, so, so there's different, different technical variances, but all related to the parking issue. Okay, so, for the record, that's what, what we're doing then. So, we're going to separate the parking variance request points with the, with the rear yard setback points. Any, does anybody care whether we go through the standards once or twice for clarity's sake? All right, well, let's just try it all together and see where we end up. Standard number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment or property values of the adjoining properties. The, as we stated, the proposal, the proposed construction seems consistent with the existing home generally. We've had members of the neighborhood here in support, so I don't, that seems to be-
I agree.
Seems to be met.
Yes.
Are we, sorry, you attempted to separate them, but you didn't say which one you were going through first.
She's doing the addition.
Doing the thirty-foot setback.
Thirty-foot setback.
Thirty-foot setback.
Here, we'll just run really quick through thirty-foot setback for each one. So, so substantial adverse impact, standard number one, on the rear yard setback.
So, I-
Agreed, Matt?
Agree.
Agreed. I agree.
Standard number two, requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance, again, small lot, pretty much keeping the same setback that we already are looking at, so in keeping on that status, agreed?
Yeah. Agree.
Yes.
Standard number three, alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. Talked about the fact that it is kind of a, one of the square cutoff properties that has been shortened, so I believe that standard's been met.
I agree.
Standard number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty is distinguished from mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out, going back to the lot size and alignment are what's pushing that issue, so I believe that standard's been met.
Agree.
Agree.
I agree.
Standard number five, the purpose of variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. The applicant has stated that they plan to continue to live in the property and do not, are not doing this on the basis of income, so I believe the standard's met.
Agree.
Agreed. Agreed.
Standard number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having any interest in the property. Again, we're talking, we talked about this being related to site configuration, existing building location, et cetera, et cetera. It's pretty much not a buildable lot if you try to do all the setbacks, so again.
Agree.
Matt?
Agree. Agreed.
Requested variation is limited to the minimum change necessary to alleviate the particular hardship, practical difficulty which affects the property. As noted again, we're not extending any further towards the backyard than we already are, so again, I believe the standard's been met.
Agreed.
Agree.
Agree.
Okay. Then, running really quickly through again, we'll run through, this is based on all the variation requests that are in conjunction required for the front yard, making a legal front yard parking space. Standard number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment or property values of the adjoining properties.
I believe the standard's met.
Agreed.
My right hand?
I'll give the neighbors the benefit of the doubt that they do not feel it will be substantially adverse.
I will as well.
I will as well.
Standard number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance, based on my previous comments. Obviously, I don't think so, rolling down the line.
For the parking?
Yeah, for parking. In keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance.
This lot is very unusual. This lot is very unusual, so I, I agree with the large, larger theory that we don't want front parking spots, but I'm still not convinced of where the front yard is. I'm also not convinced of what else they could do, and I'm also moved by the current situation of front parking in the neighborhood, and by the neighbors' feelings on the matter. So, while by and large, I do think that, yes, we do want to avoid front parking spots whenever we can in Evanston, I'm feeling that it's okay for this standard, the standard is met for this particular situation.
Okay.
Just to add to that, that the intent of the zoning ordinance, clearly, as you stated, is to avoid front yard parking spaces when possible, but the same ordinance provides for us to allow them under certain circumstances, which means there are occasions when the zoning ordinance permits it, and it seems like this is an appropriate case for it.
I would have to disagree. I think that taking something where there is very little driveway and creating a parking pad out of that is against the intent of the zoning ordinance. We've had several cases come before us in which a long driveway is involved. I think that's much more, the types of cases in which we would be more likely to recommend an approval to city council, but I think that this is a particular case in which the intent of the zoning ordinance is not met.
I don't think this has been met either.
I think it's been met.
All right. Moving on to standard number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. I think the, certainly, the lot size and configuration is peculiar to the property. Comes a little bit iffy in terms of the hardship, because part of the hardship is somewhat self-imposed, I guess, on this, so...
And in what way is the hardship self-imposed?
The need to create that space into a family room.
They're taking away their own parking space by wanting to put in a family room?
Oh, you're saying because they're getting rid of the garage?
Yes.
If the garage were rebuilt in the, roughly the same location, maybe making it a little bit wider...
Right.
They would have a legal parking space. But by the desire to add a second, or a fourth bedroom and a living, and a family room, both creates somewhat, they've traded their parking for living space.
Right, but that seems to me to be all they can do with what they've got.
Assuming that that's what the space, assuming that's how they want to configure their home.
And it's a unique property, unique size lot. I don't think...
But by that logic, anytime someone comes in asking for any variation, their problem is self-created. I mean, people seek variations because they want to make changes to their properties that require it.
Yes, they do.
So, by that logic, every time, that you're, that factor is going to fail.
Except, we're also always considering the, I mean, at least, I'm always considering the reasonable need for space, et cetera. I mean, I'm always asking, like, even if it's not relative to the corner of the house we're talking about, I'm always asking, how many other bedrooms are there? You know, what else is going on, and thinking about that in consideration with the rest of the neighborhood. I mean, there's a lot of homes that don't have a family room necessarily, so...
But is Evanston's quality of housing stock improved by having this dilapidated garage there?
No, but is it, is it...
Sorry, no offense.
Is it improved by removing a garage and having a car designated to be parked in the front area?
But the car is parked there all the time.
Doesn't matter whether the car is parked there or not. We're now designating that that is the spot at which all cars in the future will be parked there.
And we also have to consider the fact that the garage, the garage is also used for a myriad of other things that, that, you know, now need a home, so, we have...
They're probably going to have to put a shed in the backyard. I'm sure they will.
Well, that's what, they have, they have put the, that's the space that's been created opposite the mudroom.
Yeah, there's a little bit of space there, yeah. All right, so...
We're stuck.
Yeah, but anyways, okay. So, standard number three, just a quick yes or no here, I think...
Well, for, just for clarity, the self-created issue is standard six, not three. So, I don't know if you still, if you feel three is not met, or six, or both.
Well, I was merely stating that they sort of tie together in the fact that you have to, you have to assume a hardship in order to, you have to assume the hardship exists and is peculiar to the property. You have to assume the hardship is based on the property in order to, they're kind of tied together, so that's all I was saying. Anyways...
You can't talk now.
Going, going through. Standard number three, just a really quick tally. Yes, on the way down?
Yes.
Yes.
No?
I will give a yes.
Yes.
The property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulties distinguished from mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. I think this is part and parcel of our, just our last conversation, so, I...
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
I, I think the standard's met.
Yes. Okay. The purpose of the variation is not based exclusively on a desire to extract additional income from the property. Again, I think, we could probably all agree that's met.
Met.
Yes. Standard number six, the alleged difficult, difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. I'd stand by my previous kind of comments, if we just want to take a tally. Standard's met.
Met.
My opinion.
I don't believe it is met.
And standard number seven, the requested variation is limited to the minimum change necessary to alleviate the particular hardship or practical difficulty which affects the property.
No.
No.
I think it's met.
I agree. Met.
It's met.
Okay, so, as part of breaking it apart, we should do two separate motions. So, is there a motion regarding the variances, or variance in relationship to the 30-foot rear yard setback requirement?
I would move in the matter ZBA 12ZMJV 0020 for 2627 Lincolnwood Drive, that we recommend approval to city council for the requested variance on the large, on the large, on the rear yard setback.
Sorry, point of clarification, I don't, I don't think we're recommending the city council on this, are we?
No.
Everything goes to city council.
Everything goes to city council. If, if city council decides one thing, they decide the whole thing for us.
Correct.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, I've got a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and second, all those in favor of the recommendation, the motion for, to recommend?
Aye.
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 Okay, so, the motion is carried to recommend approval to the city council regarding the rear yard setback variance. And now, is there a motion regarding the variances that are associated with the parking space in the front yard?
I'll move in ZBA matter 12ZMJV 0020 with respect to the parking variations sought, that we recommend to city council to grant the parking variances, consistent with the record and testimony.
Second.
It's been moved and second, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Nay. So, on this issue, I'm going to actually explain the rules a little bit differently this time, because they're actually different. So, on this issue, because we're recommending to the city council, we won't be waiting for the fourth vote, the recommendation will go forward based on the vote that was taken here tonight. So, so this will conclude, you're kind of tying with the ZBA, and you have approval for the rear yard setback.
Well...
So, oh, no, sorry, yeah.
Don't have approval yet for anything.
Oh, because it's not, because it's all tied together. All right, so, sorry, I'm going to restate that then. Because it's all tied together, and we can't give you approval for the rear yard setback, because it is, because the parking, if there's a parking situation, the whole, the whole package goes to city council. So, you have, you're going to city council with unanimous recommendation for the rear yard setback, and a split recommendation regarding the parking, and then the city council will make the final determination. Okay? You can come up now, if there's a procedural question, we can answer that now.
Yeah, do we, do we know when the city council will hear these, or that will be?
I don't know if Steph knows, or they may have to get back to you on that.
I'll be in contact with you.
Okay. Yeah, will we, will there be a presentation? Will it be an opportunity to present at the city council?
There will be an opportunity for it, if you want to speak then.
Yep.
All right, I think that was all I had.
So, now, we just need to deal with Mr. Webly's not appearance.
Oh, yes, thanks for the reminder. Thoughts from the board regarding our now two options to either make a continuance or dismiss the case?
He, they didn't call, did he email? Melissa can, does he?
No calls, no...
The email indicates he's taking it to court, and I, and I, again, sort of think this is the third time he's gotten himself on our docket in lieu of some other case, so, in view of the fact that he's going to get resolution from a court somewhere, or at least thinks he will, I'd move that we dismiss it.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, looked like that was unanimous, so, the case regarding 1704 Gray Avenue has been dismissed, seeing that the applicant has failed to appear. And was there anything else before we adjourn? Ken, good? You're good? All right, so, we're adjourned. Thanks.